Back. Next, we will consider item 13, update on the active transportation plan. Right? Yeah, we swapped them.
Correct, Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor.
Yeah, City Manager.
So for the active transportation, we are providing an update on the progress of the active transportation plan today, and we're looking for council guidance on our draft project prioritization criteria. We have our Transportation Division staff to present this item, and we also have our consultant here in person to help. With that, I will turn it over to David Stillman, our Transportation Manager.
Thank you, Tina. Good evening, Mayor Chow, City Council members. I'm David Stillman, Transportation Manager for the City of Cupertino, and thank you for allowing us the opportunity to come here this evening to give you an update on our transportation, or our active transportation plan. We look forward to giving you an update on Phase 1 of the project, as well as looking forward to hearing your thoughts and recommendations and feedback as we dive into Phase 2. Also with me tonight, we have Matthew Schrader, our Senior Transportation Planner, and Christopher Kidd with Alta Planning &amp; Design, a firm with a great deal of experience in the preparation of active transportation plans. And Chris and Alta Planning were actually heavily involved in the development of our 2016 Bicycle Transportation Plan. So it's great to have Chris back. He brings a lot of Cupertino experience to the project as well, which is wonderful. So with that, I will turn it over to Chris to lead you through a presentation.
Thank you so much, David, and good evening, Mayor Chow, and City Council, and members of the public. As mentioned, my name is Christopher Kidd, Senior Associate Planner with Alta Planning &amp; Design, and happy to give a presentation, a summary of our work to date on the active transportation plan for Cupertino, as well as next steps in seeking input from you all and guidance, especially around our prioritization. So do we have the presentation up and running?
The presentation is, there we go.
Oh, great, okay. So we can go to our next slide. Great. So tonight, we wanted to just give a really brief overview of the description of what this project is and what it represents, to kind of share with you the work that we did during our first phase of outreach this past spring, and what we heard, what came out of that, and also walk you through some of the very data-driven analysis that we've done as part of this plan to really, in an objective way, understand kind of the needs and opportunities to improve biking and walking within the city. We'll walk you then through the process that we went through to develop our network recommendations, as well as our proposed criteria for prioritization of projects, and really where we want to make sure that we're receiving feedback directly from the council on those items, and as well as sharing what we've been doing for our current phase of outreach that we've been doing over the late summer and early fall, as well as talking through next steps on the way to plan adoption in the coming year. Just as a quick background, this is a project that really has been kind of kicking around for quite a while now. It was something that was brought up and approved for the City Work Program in 2023, and this then was put out for bid and approved by city staff in 2024. And we kind of came in right at the end of that year and have been working all year since then towards this plan document. So when we talk about what an active transportation plan is, is really, it is a combination of the city's bicycle transportation plan and pedestrian transportation plan, with the aim of making it easier and safer and more comfortable for people to walk and bike in Cupertino. And that really consists of helping us to identify the gaps that exist within the current network, to develop new recommendations drawing off of those older plans and balancing them against other needs around the city, and to make sure that we're validating those recommendations with public outreach, with the public, and applying a data-driven lens to ensure that we can set up the city staff for success over the next five to 10 years for the projects that will provide the greatest benefit and the most return on investment. I talked about it a little bit in the previous slide, but you know, we do have these two outdated plans. TDA 3 funding requirements do require the cities update their active transportation or bicycle pedestrian plans every five years. So in order to keep in good stead with our state funders, it really is incumbent to move this plan process forward, as well as creating this roadmap for city staff where they can have a high level of confidence that the projects they move forward are projects that are supported by the community and that create the greatest benefit. For our project schedules, I'd mentioned this is a project that started early this year, with our first phase of public engagement taking place in the spring. We then, over the summer, started to develop our network recommendations, brought them back to the public in August, and have been doing engagement and outreach with the public ever since then, coming to the council now to share our progress. To briefly go over these, we'd established at the beginning of the project, validated them through our first phase of outreach, a series of planned goals. And these were really, first and foremost, to focus on safety, but also access and improving access and accessibility to the different types of destinations that exist within Cupertino. To have a focus on maintenance and maintaining the current assets that the city has, to make sure they're in good condition, that they can work for people. To also pursue sustainability, to use our investments to forward the city's climate action plan, to improve air quality, to improve public health with people. We also wanted to really focus on having multimodal balance while there's an active transportation plan. It needs to be cognizant of all other forms of transportation, making sure that the investments that the city is making are creating the best benefit possible for all roadway users. And also, we wanted to focus on fairness, to ensure that the investments that are made to the walking and biking network are not just focused in one part of the city, but that are distributed all around so that people all across the city are able to enjoy them. So with that, we wanted to kind of share with you a little bit about what we did and heard during our first phase of public outreach this past spring. So we did a series of events and workshops, included nine different pop-up events and one online and one in-person community workshop. The city posted up signboards and median signs all across the city, 36 in all, to really try to increase the visibility with the public about this opportunity. And as part of our outreach and engagement, we reached almost 1,400 people through the different events that we'd held and received almost 3,000 comments through both in-person outreach events, as well as an interactive web tool and online survey that we had available for folks to interact with. And what we learned from that first phase was first and foremost, a strong desire for connected networks, for people to, for us, the city, to close the gaps that exist today and to reduce barriers that exist for people to be able to walk and bike more easily. There was also a strong emphasis on pedestrian improvements, that sometimes people in the past had felt that the city had focused too much on bicycle projects and that pedestrian projects were just as important and also needed to be prioritized. We also had asked people to rank the plan goals, to tell us which of those plan goals that we talked and shared with you were most important to them. And kind of head and shoulders above the rest were safety and accessibility. We also heard a lot about schools and safe routes to schools, and we know that a huge percentage of Cupertino students walk and bike to school already, and that we really need to focus our investments to make sure that those are routes that are safe and accessible for all Cupertino students. We also heard that, you know, there's a lot of differing voices within the City of Cupertino, a lot of differing opinions, and that this is a plan that needs to really reflect all of those voices, whether they agree with the projects, disagree with the projects. It's important to make sure that those people feel seen and reflected. We also had heard a lot of concern about the types of trade-offs that might be involved, especially when it comes to things that might impact the availability of parking, things that might change or exacerbate congestion. And we really wanted to reflect that back to the public and make sure that they know that this is something that's being considered actively as part of the projects. We had talked about before, one of our plan goals is maintenance, and we'd heard a lot about facility maintenance and making sure that facilities are in good condition and that they continue to be so. We also heard a lot of interest in people in the city monitoring and understanding the impacts of projects that do get built. If they are increasing the number of people walking and biking, if they have a positive safety impact, and looking at what other types of performance metrics the city can track to really understand what the impact is of the work that they do. So with that, I wanted to shift from our public outreach to talk a little bit about our data-driven analysis that we conducted as part of this plan process. The first thing that we did is conducted what we call a Level of Traffic Stress Analysis, which is a methodology developed at the Manetta Institute at the San Jose State University, just down the street. This is a data-driven analysis process that tries to understand how different street users perceive streets, with a level of traffic stress going from LTS 1, which is where any user would feel comfortable, either walking or biking on that street, to an LTS 4, where only the very most confident users would feel comfortable doing so. And for this analysis, we conducted an LTS analysis for the pedestrian network, looking at crossings and sidewalks, as well as a bicycle level of traffic stress analysis to understand within the Cupertino bike network, what are streets that are the most stressful and could potentially gain the most benefit from being improved. To complement that, we also conducted a, what we call, an Active Trip Potential Analysis. You can see an animated graphic here of one of those outputs that is on a dashboard that is available for the public to be able to look at and analyze. With the purpose of the Active Trip Potential Analysis is really to understand where short driving trips are taking place, where they're going to, where they're going from within the city. Because when we look at the potential for people to walk and bike more for trips that they take, we want to look at the shortest trips. It's not realistic to expect someone to walk for a 12-mile driving trip. That's just not going to happen. So by understanding where those short trips are taking place, we understand, can start to zero in on where there's the most potential for improvements. This is analysis that was used, or was created using Replica, which is a data company that uses cellphone data that can be filtered for mode, understanding where trips start and where they end, and then anonymized so that there's no data privacy issues contained, but that we can then utilize that data and understand where trips are starting and ending, and what types of ways people are using those trips. One of the kind of most interesting things that we took away from this analysis is understanding and finding out that about 30% of driving trips that take place in Cupertino are less than five miles. And when we look at trips that are less than five miles, those are trips that have the potential, not as much for walking, but for biking or using an e-bike. Those are trips that, while not every single five-mile driving trip could be replaced with a biking trip, some of them could. And by understanding where those trips are taking place, we can understand where the investments can best be made. When we look at the analysis that we did, this is just a snapshot of what that Active Trip Potential Analysis looks like, where we were able to break down geographic areas of the city, looking at trips overall, but then also looking at trips that are under one mile, trips that could be done by walking, trips that are zero to three miles, trips that can be done by bicycle, and trips that are up to five miles, which are trips that could be done by an electric bike or electric scooter device. And really, we wanted to kind of show this, to show that there's these really varying and different patterns of use in terms of trip length around the city, and that when we look at the types of investments we want to make, we need to make sure that it's informed by these potential outputs. The last piece of analysis that we wanted to share with you tonight is we call a Stress Adjusted Short Trip Analysis. And what this really does is combines both our level of traffic stress and our Active Trip Potential to understand not only where there are lots of short trips that could be taken by people walking or biking, but also where is the network providing the highest level of traffic stress in conjunction with those potential short trips, to really clearly understand where there's the highest potential for us to make investments that would create and draw new walking and biking trips within the city. And so one example of that is our Walking Gap Score Analysis that shows here, kind of in those yellow and red colors and in these different hexagons, where there's the highest percentage of, and highest count of short driving trips matched with the highest level of pedestrian traffic stress. And so by being able to combine those two things, we can then really zero in on where can we get the most bang for our buck when we make investments into the future. So with that, we wanted to then move on to talk about the current phase that we're in, our network recommendations, and how we developed them, as well as talking through some of our prioritization criteria. The recommendation process generally is really a combination of three factors, is pulling in all of the past plans that have been adopted by the City of Cupertino, as well as countywide plans, to understand what is the priorities that have already been established. We then paired that with our data-driven analysis, as well as the public input that we received during the first phase, and combining all three of those to really establish a new set of project recommendations, both for walking and for biking. The network recommendations that we developed were based and follow on established state and local guidelines, including the California Highway Design Manual, California Design Information Bulletin Number 94, which is a very bureaucratic way of saying guidelines for complete streets, as well as another, a number of other design manuals. And all of those we've used to ensure that the recommendations that we develop are consistent with state guidelines. For our pedestrian recommendations in particular, we developed what we called a grouping of three different typologies for improvements. And this was really trying to provide a level of flexibility to city staff when they pursue pedestrian intersection improvements into the future. And so we created one group of improvements that can be done largely with paint, things like putting new signs up, high-visibility crosswalks, advanced stop bars. And then we had a different group focused more on, we call geometric changes, things that we build in the street, like a pedestrian bulbout or a refuge island. And lastly, we had traffic control improvements, so changing our traffic signals, doing a thing called a leading pedestrian interval, where a pedestrian gets a walk sign before the light changes to green, or installing a new rapid rectangular flashing beacon at an unsignalized crossing. And really, by having these larger groups, it helps to establish what is the type of intervention that's needed for that intersection, while still providing staff the flexibility they need when they go into design to be able to deliver a project that can feasibly get built. With that, I wanted to move over to talk about some of the prioritization criteria that we've developed that are still in draft form. We really tried to align our prioritization criteria with the plan goals themselves, and then tie them back to a lot of the detailed data-driven analysis that we conducted for the plan. Under our goal of safety, we have criteria around collision history, especially drawing on the Vision Zero Action Plan, as well as looking at level of traffic stress across the network. When we look at access, we wanted to focus particularly on school proximity, but also proximity to high-frequency transit, where people are more likely to be walking and biking, to be able to connect with trips, as well as other destinations like parks, shopping centers, senior centers, the library. When we look at sustainability, we really wanted to focus on our Active Trip Potential, as well as our Gap Score Analysis, to really understand and prioritize locations that have high potential for new trips, as well as those areas that you saw in red in our Gap Score Analysis of showing where there's both the highest potential for trips and the highest need for closing gaps and reducing level of traffic stress. We also wanted to have a goal around balance, and criteria around balance is to really, again, looking at this multimodal lens, is trying to understand where there might be potential impacts from, whether it's to parking or to congestion, and to really ensure that that's taken into account, because we know those types of projects take a lot longer to get done. And so that then can mean that would drag down staff's ability to deliver other projects. And we really want to make sure that that's being reflected accurately and really responding to the concerns that we've heard from the community. And lastly, we wanted to make sure that the public's voice had a really strong role in how projects were prioritized. So we wanted to ensure that the input that we got from the public is being directly implemented as part of how we prioritize projects. We have a similar set of criteria for our pedestrian recommendations, a little bit different than the bike network, because not everything tracks one-to-one, but we do have safety as a primary focus, as well as key types of destinations when looking at accessibility. When we have our sustainability, we're looking more at our Active Trip Potential Analysis for the pedestrian network in particular, those trips that are under one mile, which kind of changes the geography of where we're focusing our projects, as well as building in public input as part of how we score those projects. And then lastly, we have just a very slight differentiation between our intersection recommendations and our sidewalk recommendations. So this is where we're looking to close sidewalk gaps that exist. And we just needed to establish a little bit of a difference just because you were using a little bit different data when we're looking at the prioritization for sidewalks specifically, especially when we're looking at, you know, focusing on, we developed our project recommendations, really trying to focus on closing sidewalk gaps that are nearby to schools as kind of one of the top priorities. We wanted to then share with you what we've been doing for this Phase 2 outreach that we started in August. So we've had a few different public hearings with the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission, the Planning Commission, and then with you all tonight. We did four different pop-up events at farmers' markets, at the Fall Fest, and other locations, as well as, again, doing one, two sets of community workshops, one online and one in-person. For our next steps, we are, of course, going through an update process with folks like yourselves. And when we close the public outreach phase and public comment period at the end of the month, we will then kind of redevelop our project list and go through a prioritization scoring process for the updated project list. One other thing we'll be developing is what we're calling implementation packages, understanding the highest priority projects among the projects that we have identified, and trying to do an extra level of feasibility assessment for those projects, to make sure that they are implementable, and also to potentially queue them up for grant funding opportunities in the future. We'll pull all of those things together into a draft plan that we'll be bringing back to the public, where they will be able to read, review, and comment on a commentable online PDF, where we'll be able to capture all public comments on the draft plan, hopefully then turning that around into a final plan document to bring back to the City Council for adoption in the spring of this next year. And with that, thank you for your time tonight. Thank you to the members of the public who've been here to sit through this, and we're going to be happy to take comment and get input, especially around prioritization criteria for this project. Thank you.
So, any Councilmember want?
I do, I have a number of questions. Thank you for your presentation today. I'm going to start with a few. How much money have we spent to date for the creation of this study? And where did the funding come from, just so the public knows?
Yeah, you want me to answer that, or the city staff? Yeah, go ahead, David.
We've spent about $220,000 to date, about 70% of the project budget, and the entire funding for the project comes from TDA 3 funding. It's entirely grant-funded.
Okay. Where have we considered the impact to vehicular congestion? And have we applied ASHTO studies on impact to vehicular traffic in any of these studies here?
Yeah, so we have considered vehicular congestion. We have tried to look at and identify where there may be impacts from potential projects. You know, what we apply, especially for California, is first and foremost, the California Highway Design Manual, because California develops their own guidelines rather than ASHTO. ASHTO is certainly a really strong supplement that we also consider. But, you know, the first thing that we look at is the Caltrans documentation, especially the Highway Design Manual, as well as the Design Information Bulletins, especially when it comes to the design and implementation of bicycle and pedestrian projects.
Correct. But how do you consider the impact to vehicular congestion? We recently removed the lane on DeAnza, and it's still creating a backup for many folks. How do you factor that in? Because the point system that's being suggested or used seems to be heavily biased against vehicular traffic.
Well, we did incorporate a metric that specifically looked at the potential for vehicular impact, or vehicular congestion impacts. In terms of doing physical congestion studies, that really is something that is not typically conducted at the city plan level, largely because we don't have the granularity of design detail needed to accurately study those types of congestion impacts. And so those are studies that are typically conducted at the project level, especially during the project initiation stages.
I understand that, and I'm going to be very polite. Those metrics are very biased against vehicular traffic. And the studies, if you had done real studies, we'd have better data-driven approach. The current administration canceled federal grants for bike lanes and pedestrian safety projects. They were quoted as hostile to motor vehicles and reduced the capacity for cars. By all accounts, we are now prioritizing vehicular traffic and infra over all transit. Now, that seems to be where we're moving. The current focus is to expand lanes for cars and trucks, not to reduce them. How has your plan evolved to adjust to this current reality?
Yeah, I mean, we are continuing to track federal guidelines and changes. A lot of those are not well-understood or well-established at this point. But, you know, we certainly are, and have in the past and continue to be, you know, looking for multimodal improvement opportunities and to frame the project work that we do, not exclusively from the perspective of bicycle and pedestrian trips, but also of things like safety and access to opportunity. And so in that way, we do try to ensure that we continue to align ourselves towards federal and USDOT kind of guidelines and dictates.
You don't have to look far if you want to look at USDOT guidelines. Just go back four to six years, nothing has changed. Where are the Planning Commission recommendations? Why are they missing?
Yeah, if, Madam David, you want to speak to that specifically?
Or have I just missed it, which is fine, too?
No, the planning and BPC recommendations were not included as part of the staff report, because those were recommendations to staff about the prioritization criteria, and we're here to receive direction from the council as well.
That would be very important for the council to have and understand what those recommendations were. I had to go back and go through the minutes. What percentage of our input came from seniors?
Not sure on the specific number, but I can tell you that for Phase 2, I was at the senior center, tabling, reaching out to folks, presented information at the senior center.
And push through carts and be okay with this? What percentage of road use today is vehicular today versus bike?
Chris, do you know what the city's mode share is?
Yeah, the, you know, the city's mode share, and this is really off the top of my head at this point, but, you know, when looking at ACS data, which of course is only for commute to work during morning commute hours, it's, I believe it's somewhere around 65% drive commute mode. Walking and biking commute modes make up approximately 3% of commute trips. But of course, we know that there's many other types of trips that take place in Cupertino. The city has collected a wealth of information through their Safe Routes to Schools program in terms of understanding mode choices for school trips, which can also be a very large percentage of total trips across the city. Yeah, that's, at least, not having the existing conditions memo in front of me, that's kind of the most I could say right now.
I want to go back to the senior center conversation, because when we were in the senior center asking what they had thought about the outreach, they basically did not know they were going to lose street parking. They did not know they were going to lose road lanes. They did not know they were going to narrow lanes or lose right turns. Instead, there's like, oh, where would you like a bike and walk? It was a partial approach to gathering data here. And that's an important piece to make sure that you present the full picture, not a one-sided picture when gathering data. So what is the projected shortfall, changing questions? What is the projected shortfall to fund these current plans? We don't have the funds anymore. So what is the projected shortfall if we're going to try to move to these plans?
To fund which plans? Are you referring to? To fund which plans? Are you referring to potential future funding for individual projects that would be developed as part of this process? There's still plenty of Measure B funding available through VTA. Caltrans remains committed to active transportation. MTC, our TDA three allocation, which is programmed by MTC, allows, is specifically dedicated for walking and biking projects, and is why we were able to fund this. So funding is available locally, and the landscape at the federal level doesn't really impact us as significantly as it might in other parts of the country.
What percentage of feedback was Cupertino residents only? Do we attract that?
I can tell you, based on the existing conditions memo, what percentage of survey respondents stated that they were Cupertino residents? And I want to say off the top of my head that it's over 90%. But that was just on our website. So when I was talking to folks at all the events, most of them were families, people who go to local schools, just pulling that information here.
That would be rare. Most events I see people from San Diego.
Yeah, I can also say that we-
I'm just saying we didn't track that specifically. Over your denominator doesn't have an attribute to track that data. And I have one more piece for you is when you look at replaced bike trips, for example, how pragmatic is that when it rains, or when you have kids, or when you have an elderly population? I'm just looking at the way the survey was designed, the approach and methodology. To me, it's flawed. It is heavily biased to bikes and pedestrians.
So, Councilmember Wong, let's limit this to question for now. So I think maybe let's go to other council members with questions, and then we can deliberate later.
Mayor, can I just clarify one thing for Councilmember Wong? You asked a question about the Planning Commission and Bike-Pet Commission recommendations and discussion. It wasn't part of the staff report, but we did issue a desk item. So all of those together are in one document as the desk item for today.
Yeah, okay, let's first get the questions from the council members. Anyone else would like to go next? Vice Mayor?
Thank you for the report. Unmute, that helps. Thank you for the report. So I was looking for some of the data that was used, and I know that I've had a difficult time finding vehicular counts. What I could locate was a report going back to 2018. And I'm currently serving on the VTA Policy Advisory Committee, so some of our topics, this kind of information would be really useful. But only having pre-COVID information hasn't been all that great. So did you have any recent counts? I do see you have a memo, but it's referring to having counts for pedestrian and bicycles. And I did notice that you had, that we have some improved technology at certain intersections, but not really enough for me to get a comprehensive idea of all of the segments in the city. So did you, do you have any other traffic data more recent than 2018?
Well, the the city did provide us with with ADT data, so average daily trip data for vehicular through trips on on major streets. But I can't speak to the, how recent that ADT data was. But that was one of the things that we used when trying to look at and understand the potential for for impacts, especially as relates to congestion.
Okay, so what I did find was it was related to the speeds and collisions, and it was like a speed report essentially to demonstrate that the speed limits that we had on streets were acceptable. Was there more than that?
Yes, so you're referring to the Engineering and Traffic surveys that we performed back in 2018, I believe it was. So we don't have a lot of recent ADT data on the city's streets more recently than the 2018. We did some traffic counts for half a dozen streets last year that we updated the speed limits for. We've done a few isolated spots around the city since then. We are submitting a Q1 budget request to do a citywide vehicle, pedestrian, bicycle count, as well as updating our Engineering and Traffic surveys to update the speed limits throughout the city. So that'll give us a good comprehensive look at volumes.
Okay, and would that include all of the segments that you had in the prior one?
Yes.
Okay, that would be great. So I'm seeing the Silicon Valley Hopper in your memo on page 36. It doesn't give me the information about how many trips are generating, like a heat map, which could be helpful. So if you have that information somewhere, I, you know, I really appreciate the map showing me where, you know, the most popular areas are, but I, and that you included it into Santa Clara. I think this is one of probably the most, between Silicon Valley Hopper and the other cities doing these local shuttles, along with, we have Apple's negotiated TDM as well, which I don't recall seeing that mentioned in here. But these are, they make it really difficult for VTA, I think, in the future, and in even the addition of Waymo. So are, were those things added into your report somehow? That the fact that we have these multiple plans? And then how many individuals are actually using these these different, these different shuttle networks?
Yeah, so we we didn't delve too too deeply into the data and analysis with transit use, but I think what we really wanted to reflect in the existing conditions memo was the transit landscape that exists. One thing that we were able to do is if the data is readily available, is through the VTA's portal to to be able to map the 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 density of of boardings and the lightings within the VTA network within Cupertino, which we really wanted to use as well to help inform our recommendations, because of course, every transit rider is also a pedestrian. And so when we look at our pedestrian network improvements, we really want to understand where there is these high volumes of VTA trips taking place. But, you know, I think that the, speaking to some of those other items around other kind of transit forms and start to, I guess, get outside like the the more narrow scope of an active transportation plan specifically. But we do want to take them into account, especially as it relates to the types of improvements that we want to make, especially for the pedestrian network.
Okay, thank you. So it, for us, it's a real miss that we don't have the prioritization recommendations from those two other commissions. I did take the Planning Commission motion. It was sent in by Chair Rao and just kind of distilled that again using ChatGPT. Just distilled it to see what would the change be if we, the pros and cons essentially, if we were to implement their changes to the to the whole prioritization table and then see what happens there. Did you do any test cases where you would take your prioritization method and take a previously approved plan, a couple of plans, and then see how those scores would come out and and see if you got a similar answer, a basically priority on items?
So we haven't done any any testing with prioritization scenarios yet. What I can say is that the prioritization criteria that we did develop comes kind of from a best practices in prioritization for bicycle and pedestrian plans. We'd referenced a number of other active transportation plans around the state when trying to develop this criteria specifically. And so, you know, it is, it's it's in good stead with with, you know, other similar plans from around the state.
Okay, and I could not quite distill, looking at your Echo displays, you had that image from Montreal. I'd really like to have one of those out on Stevens Creek Boulevard for our protected lanes. Yes, absolutely. I'd like to see one there, like tomorrow and on Deanza, both north and southbound, to see if those, because we're getting that question, what what's the improvement in in ridership because of it? And that could really be informative. But I couldn't tell how much those cost. I could see you had multiple tables, all sorts of different configurations.
Yeah, and the the landscape of of count technology is changing a whole lot, especially with the introduction of of AI technology capabilities. And so, you know, I think a lot of what we've seen in the past in terms of count technology and capabilities will rapidly change in the next couple of years. And also in terms, hopefully in terms of price point, to make it more affordable for implementation.
Interesting. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moheen.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
I had a question specifically about the Deanza bike lanes. It keeps coming up fairly frequently in our in our discussions. It's been about a year, I think, since you added the the bike lanes. Have you seen or is there any data to support the fact that traffic has increased or that that there is an impact, an adverse impact as a result of the bike lanes?
Yeah, I'll I'll let city staff follow up with that one.
Councilmember Moheen, yeah, we've we've done travel time studies on Deanza Boulevard, both before the project and after the project. And what we found is that during the peak hour, the PM peak hour, the travel times before and after the project are roughly similar. There has been no increase in delays in travel times as a result of the project. We've also done a cursory look at collision rates before and after the project, even though that wasn't necessarily the the original goal. And the, looking at the first six months of 2025, which is all the data that is available to date, the number of collisions, both vehicle, vehicle injury and non-injury collisions, vehicle collisions that occurred during the first six months of 2025, were roughly half of the number of injury and non-injury collisions that occurred during the first six months of of the three years prior. So we have seen, again, it's 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 early, because you need several years to really establish good statistical significance in data, especially for bicycle information, because there are many, much fewer bicycles than there are vehicles. So the the bicycle data is less conclusive. But for vehicle data, we've seen a substantial reduction in collisions along the section of Deanza Boulevard that the, that the project has affected, but no, no decrease in in travel times based upon the results of our travel time studies.
Great, thank you very much. Just wanted to make sure that the dire situation that many had predicted hasn't come to pass.
We, the data does not bear that out.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. So first of all, for that data that you have collected, is that posted anywhere? Can you send that to us?
I I can share that data with you.
Okay, great. And thank you for the great data analysis in the report. But I I wonder, there is existing conditions, but then the the stress level, the stress of is, but that's, I appreciate that the report starts with, we will look at all modes of transportation. We will look at the vehicular impact, but it seems to stay at the world level. Any data, there is no data to support. You actually look at vehicular, impact to vehicular traffic. For example, existing conditions only has existing conditions to bike path and no vehicular. And I think we do need to recognize, we have many people take short trips, but we have many people who take long trips, commute to work. And so those, if we don't know the impact to them, they will get very stressed out, and that might create more accident. And so will you keep, collect more, amend the existing conditions to include all modes of transportation? So that we can evaluate the actual improvement or stress level for all modes of users?
Yeah, that's, that's something I'll have to discuss with with city staff. It's not something we have currently in our scope of work, but I think it's it's worth discussing for the future.
Okay, if that's not in your current staff scope of work, that means maybe the project is heading in the wrong direction, because this is supposed to be looking at all modes of transportation.
Yeah, well, we-
And therefore, we have a lot of complaints. People are saying the survey is biased, because you are only asking, would you like to bike and walk more? Of course, people say yes. But then would you like to sacrifice your driving time to walk bike more? Then people might think differently, right? So it depends on, if you are asking only one side of the question, you are not getting the full answer if you are looking at a plan for all modes of transportation.
Yeah, well, I would say to that, that the the survey that we had put out during that first phase of the project was only one component of the public engagement that we were seeking. And the public engagement responses that we got are only one component of the data and process that we use to develop our network recommendations. And so we did include, and it's, I believe it's on the project website, is a memo detailing explicitly the methodology that we use to develop our network recommendations. And one of those things was looking explicitly at ADT volumes on streets to then understand and try to balance our recommendations to to understand where there are potential for for impacts and what type of project could we recommend that could improve conditions for people walking and biking, but also minimize the potential for future impact to vehicular travel.
Yeah, so I like that you have this analysis of this short trips that people take. I assume you can use the same data from the same provider to analyze other trips that's not short.
Absolutely.
Because I am curious, what are the other trips people take? And where, what road they are taking? And then we, whatever change we make, we need to be sure those longer trips are not delayed too much, because that would affect people's quality of life a lot. And then also, it's, a lot of times, I take a short trip to get coffee, but then I'm driving longer to work. That doesn't mean I can do that short trip by bicycle, because I have another trip to make. A lot of times, I pick for my son. That might be short, but then I need to take another trip that's longer. So and then a lot of times, it's multiple short trips, but it's impossible to do them. And then a lot of times, it's time also.
And and the, we did also release a few methodology memos specific to things like the active trip potential analysis and how that was conducted. And we did kind of identify, you know, in our data limitations and our analysis limitations, is, you know, calling out things like exactly what you're talking about.
So can we get data for the other trips? So we know where people are taking the longer, medium, or longer trips?
Yeah, and then there is the ability with replica to do that.
All modes of transportation, right? Good. And so I think we used to have the level of traffic, the level of service data for Cupertino when we did earlier EIR. And those, that's a good measurement of how long people have to wait at the signal to go through. And actually, if you get off 280, going through, drive, drive through Deanza, you hit many, many, many red lights, and that, it's taking a long time. So that's the kind of thing we need to analyze if we make any changes. What's the impact on those commute traffic? What's the impact on those commute traffic? So do you have any data to analyze that?
Well, doing traffic data, traffic analysis is, again, like, that's not something that is within our scope for this project. Traffic data, traffic analysis at the intersection level is something, again, that's typically handled at the project level rather than a citywide plan level. I would also mention that, you know, LOS as a metric is something that is no longer used for CEQA and the EIR process.
No longer recommended, but the city can still use it.
But, yeah, but cities, and many cities that I work with, many cities I do corridor project design work with, they still do level of service analysis, because it is important to understand the intersection level impacts that you can potentially create, understand where you have the potential for trip diversion. These are all things that are very important to do as you develop and design projects. But those are things that are typically done at the project level.
Here's another potential suggestion. I think when we interviewed the Bike Ped Commissioner, one of them, who is avid biker, suggested that you don't have to make every street bike friendly. Because for the bike riders there, you just need to have a few bike-friendly streets which they take. I think it's kind of like if you go ski. It's not impossible that you can make every trail a beginner-friendly. You have beginner trail, you have medium trail, you have black diamond.
Yeah.
And whoever gets on the black diamond, if you are a beginner, you get on black diamond, you're getting accident, I'm sorry, you are in the wrong place. So is it possible we identify our street? For example, the Artry Street are the street where we know that only advanced bike riders would use. And we discourage clearly beginner bikers from using them. Therefore, we prioritize the vehicle trailer traffic for those streets. But some other side streets, for example, Stelling, maybe those are the bike-friendly street. There, we prioritize bicycle pedestrian safety. So it's, could we do that kind of categorization so that we don't have to, I feel this is odd to say, oh, it has to be fairness everywhere. No, we, to be practical, we need to serve all modes of transportation. It's impossible for every road to be safe for everyone. It's like you have beginner trail for all ski, for the ski, then no one would want to go there.
Mayor, just a quick time check. Do you want to take public comment before we go into?
Yeah.
Well, just to-
Is that something that you would consider as something you can recommend to the council?
Yeah, and to respond to that, kind of in two points, you know, the network recommendations that we did develop really tried to focus on creating kind of redundancy of options for the public for exactly that reason. So really trying to understand where we can recommend neighborhood bike routes that can still provide connectivity, that can provide a parallel route to some of these larger streets for people that wouldn't feel comfortable using them, as well as trying to advance some of the shared use path projects that the city has been pursuing over the years, like the Tammu new trail.
Yeah, okay, my time is up. So, sorry, I tend to cut you off, because we, I'm trying to stay within five minutes for my questions.
Yes.
So, okay. And anyone else, councilmember for one?
Thank you. So I'll, in the interest of time, try to keep my questions on the shorter side. I'm mostly interested in some description from staff about how we could turn the Planning Commission recommendation set into direction to you today that would be usable. What in it do you feel presents a problem in terms of actionability, or is the whole thing actionable as stated?
I think in general, the Planning Commission recommendations are doable in concept. I think in detail, they need to be reviewed a little bit to ensure that they give good results. You know, as an example, one of the recommendations was to give points for school proximity for any roadway that's within a half mile of a school. The intention is good. But if you were to do that literally, every street in the city would get those points, because practically everywhere, you're within a half mile of a school. So we would need to look at how to, how to take their approach and follow along with what they're intending, but make it so it works in the real world. And one thing that we had talked about at staff level was, well, maybe we say if it's, a project is on one of the safe routes to school, is identified in our maps, then they would get those extra points. So that would provide a little broader than the quarter mile, but not encompass the whole city. So that's just one example. We haven't taken that level of detailed look at all of the recommendations at this point, because we wanted to complete our discussion with all the commissions and with the city council before we dive into what changes we actually want to make to the prioritization criteria. So we still need to do that with the Planning Commission recommendations. But in general, they're valid recommendations.
Okay, all right. Because there was, what felt like to me, having watched those proceedings at least twice, was an awful lot of effort at considered compromise from people who frankly don't agree with each other on a lot of things. And so I'd really like to be able to take the work that they started and bash it into some kind of shape that's usable for you. I guess the question is, is that something that we can accomplish today, workshopping it together? Or is it something that you need to go back and consider based upon direction from us?
I would feel most comfortable if we can just go back and consider it based on direction from you perhaps, council. Could we make a motion that in the spirit of the Planning Commission recommendations, we develop criteria consistent with that, and we could act on that?
Okay, all right. That sounds good. One of the things that I'll also notice is that in this presentation, it looks like there was a broader breakout of sort of scoring criteria, prioritization criteria for different types of improvements, especially for pedestrians as opposed to, say, cyclists. And the recommendations that are coming out of the Planning Commission all seem to really focus on bike infrastructure. So would you need additional direction from us on that?
You may give us direction if you please. Either way, I think we'd be happy to take a look across the board at the criteria and make sure that they're as consistent as they can be.
Okay. The other thing I just wanted to maybe underscore was, one of the criteria that engendered a lot of discussion, and oddly enough, a lot of agreement amongst the commissioners, was the way that the fairness criterion is described. And they seem to be worried, and I see what the nature of their worry is, is that if you simply assign points to projects based upon a lot of people saying something positive about it, and then detract points from it by saying something negative about it, that that's going to set off, as they described it, an arms race in public comment, and people will just try to game the system, and that that's probably not the most productive way to figure out how people generally feel, because people who feel the strongest about it are going to do the most to try to get their view taken on board. So do you have another way that you might be able to reflect the fairness criterion that would perhaps not result in that problem?
I don't tonight, but I know that is a concern that we've discussed at staff level and agree. That criteria is in there because we felt it was a good way to explicitly incorporate the public outreach, the public sentiment within the prioritization criteria. There may be a better way to incorporate that, and I don't have that answer for you this evening, but I know that's something that we're going to be taking a look at.
Got it. Because I mean, I'd even, I mean, one of the comments that they had about it was that it wasn't objective as a criterion, or at least it was trying, perhaps very superficially, to be objective. And that maybe, since that's going to be hard to discern here, that using a non-objective standard that is just, hmm, there's a lot of activity and people are interested in this space, is perhaps a more useful way of examining it. In other words, it's not assigned points. It's just, here's a heat map of things that people are interested in. Whether that's something positive or negative, there's a lot of commentary, so we know that there's interest.
Sure, that's an approach that we can take a look at.
Okay, all right.
Next, Mayor, do you have a-
Quick question. So looking at the city, the project website, I should say, you have pages which show the recommendations, and then you have others that show the Phase 1 input. And I'm seeing a lot of repeat names on the Phase 1 input. So I am curious how many were actually distinct individuals providing that. But how did you go from the Phase 1 input to the recommendations? And then you're trying to get, my understanding is prioritization, but there's conflict between your recommended prioritization matrix scoring and what the Planning Commission was interested in, and apparently also Bike Ped. And then I've got my own questions about it as well, having seen a few projects go through VTA with prioritization, where a political power can walk in there and I prioritize this, and it gets to the top immediately. So how did you go from Phase 1 input to the recommendations?
Yeah, well, if, so there's actually two different websites. One is the CupertinoATP.org that has our web map on it and some of that data. There's also a city website that, for the Active Transportation Plan, and on that, they do host our recommendations methodology memo, which then explicitly outlines kind of all of the different factors and data points that were used to develop those project recommendations, which did include pulling in past plans and past projects identified through past plans, utilizing the data analysis that we had conducted, and the public input as well. And so all of those factors went into the development of the project recommendations, and then kind of went through a series of kind of tests that, being applied against things like the Caltrans Design Information Bulletin 94, other different types of guidelines for the development of bicycle and pedestrian facilities. And so those are all of the things that are kind of enumerated within the methodology memo for how those recommendations were developed.
Okay, so where do we find your concise list of recommended projects?
I said, like, an actual physical list of the recommended? So we don't have that currently. I think that that's something that we could very easily export from. We have a shape file in ArcGIS that, where that's what we're using to host online the recommendations map. And, you know, I think that as part of the kind of final memo we'll develop for the network recommendations, following the end of this current outreach phase, like, that will be included as part of that memo, is kind of a full table listing of the recommendations themselves.
Okay, so I'll just give it kind of, for instance, project from the Phase 1 comments. One was to open up the tunnel under the 280, which was a very contentious item going back to 2015. Whole neighborhoods got activated on that one. Now, am I looking at a situation where that one comment could then result in a recommended project?
Well, at least under the current recommended projects we have, no. So not every public comment that was provided then led directly to a project recommendation.
But some could. So how would that? So I'm not really understanding how your methodology worked. You know, it sounds like while you, people have said that they don't want to have activism basically place an item on the list. Could that have happened during this public outreach process?
I mean, I would say from our experience to date with the public comments that we've received, no, it hasn't. It has certainly helped inform certain project locations that we hadn't thought of previously. It certainly helped us to inform sometimes the type of facility that we were identifying for a specific street. But I wouldn't say that there was necessarily within the breadth of public input, which, you know, the web map is just one piece of that. It included all of the in-person outreach, all the emails we received, the survey that we conducted. But I don't, at least to my recollection at the moment, you know, we will be also publishing at the end of this outreach phase, an outreach summary that will have in detail all of the data that we received for these outreach phases. But there's nothing that's coming to mind for me about like a particular location or project where there was, you know, this kind of outpouring that you're speculating about.
Okay, thank you. But you can provide your recommended project list to the council?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that that's a very easy export on our side to an Excel file.
Okay, thank you.
That's great. I would like to see that. Actually, on the website, there is also a recommended policy list that I wished it could have been included in the agenda packet, because the council is the policymaking body. It seems to be very limiting to only give us criteria. So, but I understand, I think, I actually would not want to see the council make any motion on criteria, because as you have indicated, you are still developing them. I think it would be good in maybe another session, if you give some example project, and then try and understand how those criteria will work with those projects. And then we decide what criteria might be best. I think that would be a better process than, without seeing any project that's just play with numbers. And that's what I hope. Okay, so I guess we should go to public comment now.
Mayor, I have two requests to speak from in Community Hall, and currently no request to speak virtually.
Okay.
Peggy Griffin and Jennifer Griffin.
Does this work? Good evening, councilmembers and staff. I have several issues with the criteria. The, first, I totally agree that the Planning Commission recommendations should be incorporated. The Attachment A draft project prioritization criteria is too vague. It says half a mile from here, quarter mile from there, and as David Stillman mentioned, a half a mile, you can cover the entire city. So I think that is too far, too much to begin with for any point in time or point in the city. My issue is that also is that it's not data-driven. We don't have that complete picture of where we are right now. I would suggest that you pause until you get the Q1 data that Manager Stillman had said they were going to request. Do that, and then come back and complete this. Otherwise, you're not going to get good results. Impact on traffic and parking, the criteria don't seem to reflect that. It's bike and ped, but that's about it. It doesn't include level of traffic stress for motorists. There are some intersections that I just, my stress level goes up because there's a bunch of pedestrians there, and I don't want to do a right turn and run into them. I would suggest adding the pedestrian network sidewalk obstacles. There's a big box on Stevens Creek by the mattress store in the, what used to be the Mervyn Shopping Center. We've almost hit three people three times. Bikes that come the wrong direction, the box is so big, it blocks visibility, and there's nothing there. So that should be added. And please pause it till you have all the data. Go back and do the studies. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next, we have Jennifer Griffin.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks to the staff and the consultants for doing all of this difficult work of trying to do good data analysis, do statistical methodology that really, really shows what actually is occurring. We want to make sure everyone is safe, whether you're in a wheelchair, you're in a car, you're on a bike, you're on an e-bike, et cetera. you're in a car, you're on a bike, you're on an e-bike, et cetera. Then again, we do have a lot of challenges. We have a lot of pressures from the state level to get rid of parking, to get rid of cars, to get rid of lanes. And there has been a preponderance to promote bikes. Now we've got e-bikes coming in. We have danger. Some of the school districts are actually not allowing children under 12 to ride e-bikes onto their campus. I believe that the City of Alameda has done this, San Bruno. It is a big problem in Santa Cruz with children riding e-bikes all over the place. We see them all the time. There's no helmets. City of Santa Cruz and County of Santa Cruz rent the e-bikes out. And, you know, it's a big summer crowd, et cetera. So there are a lot of challenges, but we need to make sure that we're using adequate statistics. I will tell you right now, I may be a bit jaded because I spent an hour last night at the Zoom for Catalysts for Local Control with three learned men completely panning the Plan Bay Area 2050 as lunacy, stupid, makes no sense. That plan did not do any upgrades to any highways in the state, but yet promoted complete bike infrastructure. And I'm not beating on the bikes here, but to see three grown men for an hour, who are statistical analysis people, completely reaming Plan Bay Area was just mind-boggling. I'll just say right now that I'm a firm believer in LOS. I know that the state doesn't like it, but I'm getting to the point now where if the state doesn't like it, it means we should go back to LOS. If the state doesn't like it, we need to use it. I don't believe a lot of this stuff that's coming out of the state right now because they don't have our best interests. Anyway, also, what about delivery trucks? How do they impact? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have, we will move to those members of the public requested to speak virtually. There are three requests to speak. Seema Linskog, Jennifer Sharon, San Rao. Welcome, Seema.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, council members and mayor. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm speaking today as myself, as a resident. But I do want to say, as a planning commissioner, the Planning Commission spent a lot of time talking about this topic. And as Councilmember Fruin said, it was a rare moment of bipartisan collaboration and agreement, where we ended up with a motion that I proposed and that Chair Rao seconded and that we unanimously voted for. So that shows you the strength of the collaboration and agreement that we came to there. And given how rare that is, I hope that the council will take that into consideration and consider the recommendations that came out of the Planning Commission. And to Councilmember Fruin's point, you know, maybe they need to be adapted based on real, you know, on-the-ground considerations, as Manager Stillman said, which is great, which is fine. But we sincerely hope the council will consider them seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Seema. Next, we have Jennifer Sharon, followed by San Rao, followed by Greg Stillman. Welcome, Jennifer.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Chow and City Council members. Well, the four of you that are in the chamber. I encourage you tonight to adopt the recommendations of the Planning Commission. It was built on the back of the work that the BPC did. And as Commissioner Linskog mentioned, it was unanimous in the vote for the commission. And oftentimes, the Planning Commission can be a bit fractious and they don't agree. So this is actually pretty great that they did do that. And I encourage you to do that since they were thoughtful in an appropriate way to evaluate city active transportation projects. And I do want to emphasize the fact that this is an active transportation plan, not for passive transportation. So we need to keep that in mind when we're looking at evaluating these different projects and their impacts. So thank you for your work on behalf of Cupertino and have a good night.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have San Rao. Welcome, San.
Evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore and council members. I'm speaking on behalf of myself only as a Cupertino resident. I will echo the previous comments that we did a diligent job on Planning Commission and attempted to get a motion passed that reflected the constituents on DICE at that time. Having said that, I will just call out specifically the friendly amendments that we attempted to make that did not pass, given the constituents on the DICE and the ability to pass motions. So there were a couple of things that we did want to get through. The first was to try and prioritize middle schools and high schools, so that safe routes to schools for bike routes focused on middle and high as opposed to elementary, given the number of children in elementary schools that are biking. So I think a pragmatic study there would help to really look at how much bike traffic do we really have around elementary schools? And should we focus our resources on high schools? And I think everybody agrees that our high schools and middle schools perhaps can be protected. I think the second thing that I would have liked to see that I could not get into the motion was to ensure that right turns on red are not impacted and to make sure that we factor that in. Because right turns on red really keep Cupertino moving. If you've driven around on our streets, those right turns really help from preventing backlogs that are too severe. So I would encourage you to look at right turns on red. I would also encourage you to look at making sure that any sort of motion here includes safe driving. And safe driving comes not from deputies, but from speeding cameras and red light cameras. And we've really got to get that in with the help of our state Assembly members needed to add Cupertino to the pilot program for red light cameras or speeding cameras, as the case may be. Now, having said all of that, I'm really troubled by the omissions of staff in not including the Planning Commission recommendations. And I also heard a comment earlier today when Commissioner, when Councilmember Wong asked about why it was not included, that the focus was different. And I believe that that is an incorrect statement from staff. The focus was exactly identical. We reviewed the prioritization criteria. As you can see from the motion, it was all on prioritization criteria. So this omission is material and it's troubling. I also want to point out that the few chances I had to observe staff, I thought they did a very diligent job in the outreach. I wish we had done that same outreach for housing element, but the right questions were not asked. And finally, you know, the whole premise that people will stop driving and walking and biking may not apply to family members that need to commute kids around and seniors. So please keep that in mind and decide if this project is really making sense to you at the macro level as you fund these things and whether they should be funded or not. Thank you.
Thank you, San. And our final speaker is Greg Stillman. Welcome, Greg.
Good evening. Evening, Mayor Chow, evening, Vice Mayor Moore, council members. I'm Greg Stillman. I'm a longtime Cupertino resident. I'm a parent in the elementary and vice districts. So I appreciate all of the intent of making our streets safer for everybody. My observation over the past decade or more unfortunately is kind of disconnected from those attempts. I don't see the attempts translate into actually safer streets. I don't see myself using my bicycle more or my kids feeling safer to use my bicycle. And I suspect that that's because we're actually not. While we're attempting to look at the data, we're not actually looking at the right data. And we're not really making the decisions that we need to make in the most data-driven, most universal or universally applicable way possible. So my request is to please pause the bike lane build-outs, the bike lane build-outs and any lane changes for a period of time, let's say for two years. And we use that time to really sit down and understand what we should be measuring and to measure the right things. And to really try to understand from all perspectives, from the perspective of the drivers and the pedestrians and the bikers, of what's happening in our streets. How many bikes, e-bikes and scooters do we have in each corridor, right? On Deans, Stevens Creek, Blaney, Wolf? How many cars? How long do the trips take? Where do the crashes happen and why? And who is involved? How fast can emergency crews get through? Right? So why pause now? Because the current approach slows down drivers, slows down emergency response, right? It creates gridlock. It makes, there's a lot of unsafe scenarios that are happening every day due to unpredictable traffic patterns. Due to this, you know, some of the things that we're trying to do, they're changing things in a way that we don't fully understand. We're not measuring. And when the traffic becomes unpredictable and slower, safety gets worse. So day to day, I see a lot of problems on McClellan, for example. The separated bike lines, they feel, they look, they kind of seem like they should be safe, but I see a bunch of wrong-way drivers, riders on bike paths every day. And I look at that and I'm afraid that that's an accident waiting to happen. I see pedestrians walking in the bike lane the wrong way all the time. Wolf and Stevens Creek, you know, there are changes that were made there. There's a lot of gridlock there. There is still, I don't feel any safer as a driver or as a pedestrian there or as, you know, I don't even try to ride my bike there. So the e-bikes and scooters throw a whole different, you know, wrench into the works here because they seem to want to behave like a pedestrian sometimes and sometimes like a bicycle. They're faster, they're heavier, they mix with walkers.
Thank you. That is your time?
Yep.
Mayor, no additional requests to speak for this item?
Thank you. So, yeah, first, I tried to look for the word electric in your policy recommendation documents. There were two of them. I didn't find any. So what have you studied about e-bikes, scooters?
In the program and policy recommendations, we do have recommendations for some sort of education program to teach users that there are rules of the road that govern these devices. So we have that in there under, I believe it's under education and not encouragement. But it's certainly an item.
Yeah, this is something that if there's interest from City Council, we can also expand upon. But there's also been a lot of new legislation at the state level to try and help provide some more regulatory frameworks around electric mobility devices. There was recent legislation passed this year to establish a new category of device called an e-moto, which are some of those devices that a friend of mine calls bicycle-shaped devices. Usually, they don't have pedals on them. They can sometimes go, you know, up to 30 to 40 miles per hour. They don't fit within the classifications of the existing e-bike class system. And so that can be a really big safety hazard. It can also be something that discourages people from using facilities if they don't feel like they're going to be safe because of these other devices. And so, you know, that's something where we can certainly look at expanding upon that within some of the documents, memos, draft plan that we develop around kind of the emerging state-level landscape. There also is legislation that's been passed more regional levels. County Marin, for example, has passed legislation that restricts the certain types of e-bike classes to be used by, you know, children under the age of 12. And so, you know, those are all things that are worthwhile looking at. I know the City of San Francisco as well has done a lot of studies around the safety impacts of scooter share in particular and looking at the safety impacts, especially from solo fall collisions, because those are much more prevalent on scooter devices and trying to understand the public health impacts of those devices and how you can create benefits from those while helping to mitigate some of the negative externalities.
Thank you. Any other questions?
There are no questions. I want to make some comments.
Yeah, Councilmember Wong?
I want to be clear. We all want safety in our modes of transit, but we must not take extreme views to force an impragmatic ideology on the general public that cars are not a reality. I am seriously disappointed with how much money we spent here to support a biased plan that is not inclusive of all modes of transit, especially the supermajority approach. Car drivers must be taken into account before any infrastructure project. If ATP wants to coexist separately from said vehicular analysis, that's fine. But to look at infrastructure projects in a vacuum that excludes car drivers is wrong. I can't believe we did not take the PC recommendations and walked in here without consideration. The survey was not data collection. It was a marketing and messaging psy-ops to influence opinion and to bias the results of a bike bed lobby agenda. We hear data-driven, but we see biased collection. We hear plan for walk-in biking, but we don't have vehicular plans. We hear outreach, but we don't count for vehicular seniors that are impacted by lane closures, loss of parking. If you look at Alta's work in history, these consultants have been biased against vehicles since 1996. That's why they are hired. We have an outcry of residents, very smart residents, who are worried about their quality of life, who can do the data analysis and know that the data collection is flawed. We have not sought automobile-specific input. We have not ensured Cupertino-specific input. We have not accounted for the future with tossed vehicles and not expensive mass transit. We hear best benefit on road users, and this was not delivered. We restricted traffic and caused backups despite what we are hearing from staff. We would not be receiving complaints if residents didn't feel the impact of a lane reduction. How does backup traffic help air quality? Come on, folks. We want to be environmental. This was not a fair and objective approach. We should cancel the ATP. We should let go of the consultants for shoddy work, failure to count for all input and bias in design methodology. We are not operating with the right guidance. We need to redesign a holistic and inclusive study and prioritize circulation of the majority mode of transportation while keeping all modes safer. I'd like to make a motion to cancel the ATP and to, we have consultants with a more balanced approach and direct staff to understand the shift in the mandate to address vehicular modes of transit and to take into account the PC recommendations. We're being ignored by staff, and it's very obvious.
He made a motion. Yeah, so anyone would like to second that?
If I can ask a point of clarification of staff. Earlier, it was noted that about $22,000 has been expended thus far on this project?
Yes, that's correct.
Right, and if we were to cancel the ATP, would we not have to reimburse the consultant out of our own pocket?
Yes, we would lose, it would cost the general fund $220,000 if we were to cancel the contract now. If we were to proceed through the end of this project as planned, it would cost the city zero dollars.
Okay, that I think is important for everyone to understand.
Let's just wrap it. Let's call it quits and wrap it up.
So how much money is remaining?
Roughly $80,000.
Only $80,000 left for the project?
Yeah, we've completed Phase One, developed the project recommendations, performed all the analysis work. And really, all that remains is the prioritization criteria and running that and creating the publicly editable PDF of the draft plan. So the creation of the plan itself, so those would be the remaining costs.
Oh, okay. So your, what comes next slide? So you are planning to create a draft plan by, before January, so likely December. And then it will be circulated for public comment in January, February of next year. So that's what's left.
Correct, as well as the creation of the implementation packages. So we have HMH as a consultant who will take some of the priority projects that come to the top and create conceptual design for those so that we can kind of get a head start on potential grant funding. And then if the council chooses to move forward with furthering design for those projects.
Um, so would you get the council approval before you move on the conceptual design?
No, so the conceptual design is just simply like five percent work showing, here's the project, um, in planning detail really.
So that's included in the eighty thousand dollars?
That's correct.
Left, okay.
Um, and just, just to add to that as well, the, the implementation packages, you know, we, we are looking at them from the lens as well of, of trying to create a better understanding of where there may be potential impacts for projects as well to be able to give you as decision makers for some of these priority projects a better understanding of, of those projects before the, the plan itself is adopted. And I think really speaking towards some of the comments that we heard tonight about understanding impacts from potential projects, um, you know, that's one of the mechanisms that we want to use in order to give both the council and the public a more informed look at what those, what elements of those projects need to be focused on when in, at a future date, city staff decide to pursue them.
Mm-hmm, okay. Um, vice mayor.
Okay, thank you. Going back to the agenda item, so this is a study session to receive an update on the development of the active transportation plan and provide feedback on the draft project prioritization criteria. Okay. So when we look at the prioritization matrices that were set up, you've got, um, for, one for bicycle projects and then two separate ones for pedestrian sidewalks and intersections. Um, and I just want to point out, so I'm, you know, providing some feedback here, so stress levels exclude the lack of shade trees. Um, and that gets into the notion of was, was the cost effectiveness of a project worked into your prioritization. So, um, there are some ways to, uh, that that could be worked out, you know, planting a tree versus, um, having a class four bike lane. How are these going to be ranked? You could add a cost efficiency criteria, you could add a funding leverage criteria if you were to know that there is funding available for various, various projects, kind of like this project here. The way I'm, the way I look at this is that because you received grant funding in order to provide this and what, and it sounds like, and please, you know, add some nuance to this if I'm off base, that we need to have our plan updated so that you can go out for measure B funding and some other grant funding. So we need to have this plan kind of put together for those requests to be made. Um, is that, does that, is that fair assessment? Okay, good. So with regards to, um, uh, going back to the cost item, so you could also use it as a filter. So I imagine there was some reason why you didn't put cost in your prioritization matrix, which I don't know the answer, so this is feedback. So I don't think that we are personally, we're, I don't think that we're done today with the prioritization. I would need to see a rough, um, a rough draft of what your recommendation, recommended projects are. What I have done is, and it wasn't clear, uh, I know we're referring to the planning commission recommendations, but it wasn't clear if their recommendations were for the bicycle or the pedestrian sidewalks or the pedestrian intersection, um, matrices. And so I've looked back at Chair Rouse's, um, email that he sent in and it didn't say specifically on the final amendment in, in the text that he had which one that those went for. It's, and so what I did do is took a couple of projects like the Stevens Creek Class Four Protected Bike Way and, um, adding flash beacon hawk lighting at a, um, at a, just a generic dangerous pedestrian crossing, um, and to see how the scores would change if I used your criteria or I used the planning commission criteria. And where that gives me another question is, okay, so you have got a bike project, I've got a pedestrian sidewalk, I've got a pedestrian intersection project, and I'm going to prioritize those all within themselves, so to speak. So how does my bike project then rank up against a pedestrian intersection project? Um, and then thinking about some of the accidents that we've had with those pedestrians, thank you for bringing up the proximity of schools, um, but we've had individuals get hit by cars nowhere near a school. Um, and, and this has happened, you know, repeatedly. Um, and then there's also just, you know, strange accidents that have happened where I just, it was just really unfortunate, um, how these things have happened. So it wasn't, uh, that, that it, that it was a known, um, dangerous crossing. We know that people speed there, um, and, and then someone got hit and so that there's things that we could have, uh, uh, foreseen that would be an issue. So for the prioritization, we, I would need some information, we would all probably need this information about how you're going to, um, connect the three lists together. Um, and then the next problem that we'll have as a council is that we have our CIP prioritization and where do these guys, where do these, these projects go, um, in the, in the list with, uh, park improvements and, and other CIP projects that we're, that we're looking at? Um, and that, that's more of a, you know, senior staff, uh, question to answer. Uh, so, um, for today, we're supposed to be providing you with a feedback on the prioritization criteria. Um, I don't feel like there's consensus in, um, because there's a lack of clarity, I don't feel like there's consensus to go with the planning commission's recommendations because I don't know your, your complete list and that I want to run tests to see what happens, um, on projects, to see how they rank, even past projects, to see that if we used your, uh, prioritization, um, matrix, would, would we have arrived at the same conclusion? Do we think that this is going to work out, um, better for us, uh, in, in the future? So hearing that, uh, is there a way that we can have this come back with some more information and really focus in on what that scoring, um, actually ends up doing? Uh, because I've seen through VTA and their, their scoring mechanism, some interesting things end up on the top of, of lists and you end up with some unexpected, um, surprises. Uh, and if, for instance, if the school proximity doesn't really work out as, as addressing a problem, um, then maybe that, that scoring needs to change. I, I also feel like that is, um, it's a little heavily, uh, focused on a particular age group, um, and we are, uh, in a graying, um, city as well. So it might not be that that, the school crossings are, um, are, are needing the focus moving forward, especially considering safe routes to school as, as a very large budget. And we've been already investing heavily there. I'm just throwing that out there that I, that I don't, I don't know, but there might not, there might be other areas that need our attention more. Um, I also didn't feel like, uh, in, in addressing the five-mile trips, I didn't feel like the Silicon Valley Hopper or, um, uh, the Apple TDM, um, was incorporated in, in that thought process. Because I think what we're, what we're going to see is people using Silicon Valley Hopper for those five-mile or less trips. And, um, if you're looking at an aging population, uh, you're going to have people even less likely to want to hop on a bike or a scooter for those, for those, um, distances. So I'd, I'd like to see, see, hear a little bit more about, um, what you predict for the, for the future, um, with regards to that and if we are making an investment or considering investments that aren't really going to pan out because people's habits are going to be changing, um, that the competition for ride sharing is going to become more intense with these automated vehicles, um, those, those sorts of things. So I want to make sure that we're making, um, wise investment choices. So if there's a way that when this does come back, that we've got the cost effectiveness, um, somehow incorporated, I think that that would help a great deal.
At this point, I'd just like to note the time. I think we need to vote to extend the meeting.
Oh. Um, so we have one more item after this.
Correct.
So do we want to extend it to eleven-thirty so we can consider item twelve today?
It's up to council if you want to extend for an hour, um, but we can...
I'm happy to extend thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes?
If thirty minutes away, well, then have to postpone twelve. Is that okay if we don't get to twelve?
Why do we have to postpone twelve? Why do we have to postpone twelve?
I think if, if council's close to making a motion on this item, we may be able to hear the next item in thirty minutes.
I don't think next item will take less than thirty minutes though.
Oh, good to, good to know. I thought it was going to be much quicker than, than thirty minutes.
Um, through the mayor, we're just providing feedback on the criteria.
Yeah, just provide.
Uh, I don't know what the, I mean, the motion could be that they...
We don't need a motion.
If I could just interject.
We don't need a motion today, I think we just each provide feedback, yeah.
Correct.
But I think it's, uh, if one, yeah, I think we are each providing feedback and if there's what some other people say you agree, maybe you want to say that because the staff might not know you also agree with what some other people said. So we're not taking formal vote, but kind of if you agree, say it, yeah. So I agree with what vice mayor had, uh...
I, I do think we need to actually extend the meeting.
Yeah, but we do need to, so that's extended for thirty minutes for now?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, that's a motion?
Second.
Uh, let's vote.
Councilmember Frutin, Fruen?
Aye.
Councilmember Mohan?
No.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
The motion carries with Mohan voting no.
Okay. So I am...
Can I, can I make a quick point here? I, I, I have taken a extremely harsh point of view, a strident point of view, because we did not account for vehicular modes of transit. I'm hoping the criteria going forward does because I don't know where we went off track, I don't know what's going on with the consulting firm, but please, please account for vehicles, account for a senior, uh, graying population that's not going to be out there biking, um, and, and understand that circulation is important. I think we've tried to explain this to both staff and to input, but, but I really feel like it's upon deaf ears, and that's why I've been very strident today. So, that's all I have to add.
Okay. So let me just share my comment. It's on the screen. I know council member Fruen is next. Um, so first of all, I agree with what my vice mayor had, that we need this to come back. Um, and I would like to drop the public input from ranking criteria because it's not objective and it's unreliable and it's a public input during this year when we haven't even seen the project list. So it's not really a good criteria. And also I think we should remove fairness as a ranking criteria because the city already has a CIP adoption process. Every year we look at all the projects and then the council will then decide what is fair and there are many different things to consider, not just geological location. And, um, I agree that we have to have cost efficiency, um, the impact on the user of, of the project. Um, so low-cost, high-impact pack projects should be prioritized so that we don't just spend a lot, we don't have a lot of, um, city budget. So we should prioritize low-cost, but project that will, um, be more, um, useful. And I do think that we cannot ignore impact to vehicular traffic, especially for artery streets which people rely on to commute, to get to different area of the city to shop and especially for seniors and family with children. It's not very easy to get around. Um, so that needs to be added to the ranking criteria as subtract points if a project has negative impact to vehicular traffic. And I think we should add and prioritize the criteria for technology solutions. There are so many sensor technology that can be used to improve safety, uh, sensor-driven, um, bicycle detection, you have safe driving technology, speedometer, red light cameras. I think if we use technology to make, uh, to, to, I guess, reduce, uh, dangerous drivers, that's improve safety too. And that's really not, that's, and the technology that can help detect, maybe provide warning for pedestrian bicyclists and that would help. And I think we need inputs from drivers, um, dangerous, uh, corners, intersections such as what Peggy had mentioned earlier. I couldn't catch what exactly is where you said you almost hit people three times. Um, please write it in so we know where exactly that is. But when, if, in that case, it's when something is, is wrong with that design. It's not the driver is not careful. Then we need to get this feedback from drivers. Where are these points where, uh, it's actually dangerous for, to add stress to the drivers? And that's missing from your data. And for around schools, I think we have just recently got an email from a school that they are requesting traffic management because there is gridlock, uh, on, around school. So, so it's not just a matter of bike and path traffic safety. If you can manage the traffic well, um, make vehicular traffic flow more smoothly, that improves safety also. And that seems to be missing in the current plan. And then I, I think I, I'm just reiterating what we have mentioned earlier. I would like data on longer trips from the cell phone data you had in addition to the short trip data. And, uh, vice mayor had requested that we hope to see the list of projects generated. And of course, if we can get a simple criteria, um, scoring that give us better idea what kind of criteria is, makes sense. And, uh, please give us data on the Deans of our for bike lane. Um, it's good to, good to know that it doesn't have too much impact. And the data from the SV Hopper, any data we have, and TDM data from Apple, um, that's all. Okay. Uh, council member Fruen?
So I like most of the, the commentary that, uh, Vice Mayor Moore had to offer. I think that as a necessary predicate, though, in order to be able to make it work, I'm, I'm sort of drawn back to my original commentary about the planning commission recommendation, which is if you can take it back and see how you might make it workable for your purposes so that it can, she can engage in this sort of double scoring, um, I, I think that that would make this a more productive conversation. Um, I'm not going to lambaste you for going, for not going beyond the scope of the project. The, the project has a scope, it's an active transportation plan, it's not the mobility element. Um, we're not trying to do everything here. This is a discreet thing, it has particular, you know, objectives. Um, it, it, one of those objectives is not how fast can I go down Stevens Creek Boulevard in a car? It's how do I make it easier to walk and bike and make it safer? That's basically what this is about. Um, so that's recognized. Um, I know that you've heard a lot of invective here tonight, I'm sorry about that. Um, and I look forward to seeing what you bring back later. One question, though, that I do have for you is, you know, if we do bring this back again for further consideration, what does that do to your timeline? Because you've, you've got some things on it. And i- is there a deadline by which funds have to be expended under the grant?
No, there's no deadline. I mean, no, none that is really relevant here. So if, um, we can certainly bring back some, uh, some draft criteria that the council can consider, uh, based on the comments that you provided to us this evening. And, um, it, it's doable, we may, it may extend the schedule a little bit, but it's, it's not going to affect any funding or anything else.
Okay. Okay, so we can deliberate and everything will be fine. All right, thanks.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Wong, I hope that I get your support on what I have proposed because I think staff, if if we get more support from some of the points, we can, I don't think it makes sense to cancel the project now. It's gone so far away. But then we can try and steer it so that we have a plan that's practical and useful for Cupertino. And I think that will be the best outcome. So please provide your comment if you support what any of us said.
Mayor Chow, I just wanted to clarify something here, real, real important. We have been told consistently by staff and by people that the active transport plan includes vehicles, right? I know it doesn't. I'm just deliberately making that point. We're like, oh, don't worry about it. Oh, you know, don't worry about the cars, you know? The ATP covers everything. It doesn't. That's the point. Councilmember Fruen is completely correct. This is about active mobility, non-powered, not e-scooters, not cars, not that. And we've over-prioritized an ATP over other vehicular traffic. We've put so much money into this, so much staff time. That's my point. And that that's really what I'm trying to stress. The definition by 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 beginning of an ATP was that forget the vehicles. That was the problem, right? So fundamentally, we started off with the wrong plan. So that's my point. I'm happy to support what you have there, Mayor Chow. And I'm just asking a question. Why don't we make a motion to take some of your pieces that are there and direct staff to incorporate it? Because otherwise, it's pretty fuzzy. It's not clear if we don't make a motion to say, I'd like to support the points that you made there, Mayor Chow, so that we can actually go forward with it and make that concrete that this is what the recommendation of council was. Otherwise, it's lost with all our other recommendations. So I'm I'm happy to just make them to support your your areas that you suggested along with Mayor Vice Mayor Moore's and see if we can gather support from the rest of council to say this is where the direction we'd like to go.
Okay, what people think about having a motion?
Just a comment, Mayor.
Yeah.
You know, there's just so many details in your the slide that you presented. Why don't we use the the Planning Commission recommendations as a basis?
That has so much detail that I object.
Not, not to accept it as it is, but to use that as a basis. And and we heard staff say that they could work with that document and incorporate some of the changes you wanted to see, you and the Vice Mayor wanted to see. So use that as a basis for including some of your concerns.
That one has so much detail, add five points here and there. Without seeing a project this, I don't really know it.
Using that, we're just using that as a basis. Otherwise, we're just sort of floundering all over the place.
Vice Mayor?
Mayor, if you make a motion to to take your plan forward, I'll second it and then put it to vote.
Okay, I'll second that.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I don't know if this needs to be a friendly amendment, but as we look at the the prioritization scoring as it comes back, one project that comes to mind is the Tamian Inu Trail. And for me, I would like the scoring to result in a project like that to, you know, be ready for getting grant funding because it's moved really high into the project list. So just if, I don't know if that needs to be a friendly amendment or just something to hold on to.
I would support that, Vice.
So add grant potential?
You're trying to design a criteria, Vice Mayor?
It's more with, like, I would want to see a a test on this one. So I was asking for some tests on some prior projects to see how they would fare. One was, I gave that example of the Stevens Creek Boulevard Class Four protected lanes and and just kind of a generic, difficult pedestrian crossing. And then I'd like to see how a project like the Tamian Inu Trail would would rank in the in.
So like.
So a couple, a couple of tests, I think, would be very helpful.
So the staff direction, Vice Mayor Moore, you're saying is we want to create.
This generated.
Scenario to test the criteria to see how it would result.
And, you know, the other council members might not feel like the Tamian Inu Trail should rank that high, but it'd be curious to see how how the scoring handles a project like that.
So your main thing is, I think you mentioned earlier you would like grant potential to be considered as a ranking criteria. So that's what I added. Is that something?
It was the, it was the cost effectiveness component.
I already have that.
Okay, well, that kind of combines altogether, but I, the staff will be able to work with that.
Renting grant potential?
I, that fits under the cost, the cost efficiency criteria. They would look at that. Yeah.
Something like that. Yeah, like that. Anything else you would like to add? Councilmember Mohan, anything from Planning Commission that you feel should be included?
I was satisfied with the the final recommendation by the Planning Commission.
So Mayor, is this the motion, then?
Yeah, this is a motion.
And I I believe I heard a second.
So I seconded it. So Councilmember Wong.
I thought Councilmember Wong said if you made the motion, he would second it.
Oh, either way. I'll make it, okay, I'll make the motion. Councilmember Wong can second it.
I will second it.
And I think Vice, Councilmember Fruen?
Yeah, I I'm concerned that there are things in here that feel like they wander outside the existing scope of the project. So I'm I'm not going to support the motion. I think that staff have enough feedback from us on what they really ought to go and do.
Okay, that's a vote.
Councilmember Fruen?
No.
Councilmember Mohan?
No.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Motion carries with Fruen and Mohan voting no.
So we have twelve minutes. Should we consider the item twelve?
Let's do it. Let's do it.
Let's do it. So that's motion. We might need to extend it again at eleven, but let's try. Okay, item twelve, City Manager.
Thanks, Mayor. So this is an ordinance that staff is bringing forward for council consideration for a film permit. The city currently does not have a formal ordinance to to regulate film production activities. And over the past year, our communications team has received over a dozen inquiries. And we're handling them on an ad hoc basis right now. So we're really hoping that with through this ordinance, we can recover some staff cost and ensure some, you know, adequate protections for the city. And to thank you to the Attorney's Office for helping us craft an ordinance. And I have Samantha Locurto, our Communication and Marketing Coordinator. She's going to run through a very quick presentation. And then we'll be available for questions.
Pardon, Mayor, do we, I guess.
Just quickly, yeah, she'll do a quick presentation, yeah.
Sam will run through it quickly.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. As Tina said, my name is Samantha Locurto, and I'm here to talk to you tonight about the proposed film production ordinance. So a little bit about why we are here tonight. As a well-known city in Silicon Valley, Cupertino has received consistent filming requests from a variety of organizations and entities. Some of those are listed here on the slide. Currently, without an ordinance, there is no clear procedure for how filming requests are handled. So each one is handled on a case-by-case basis, often with those who make the inquiry not really knowing who to go to in the city. So they kind of unfortunately get passed around. So in the absence of an ordinance, there is ambiguity. So the creation of an ordinance would steer, would create a clear process and guidelines for those seeking to film within the city and would also help recover costs associated with staff time. So a little bit about the research and framework. Staff conducted research around film ordinances in cities and within Santa Clara County, including the city of Saratoga and the city of Santa Clara. Outside of the Bay Area, we also looked at Carson City as well as cities within LA County. As part of our research, we also found that the state of California has its own California Film Commission with its own set of guidelines. The proposed ordinance requires film permits on public and private property with a few exemptions. Those are news media, private, non-commercial videos, such as like home videos or home filming, studio filming. So this is filming at like a specific studio location. And then also nonprofit and student films. I think it's important to note here that a permit is still required for nonprofits and students, but they are exempt from the fees. So the proposed ordinance, as it is, authorizes the city to collect permit fees, and these would be comparative to other cities, and also establishes these requirements that are listed here. These include oversight, traffic and neighborhood impacts, filming hours, site conditions, insurance requirements, and noticing. And this is to really protect the community and establish clear guidelines. Next step, so looking forward, the proposed ordinance has actually already, it's gone to the California Film Commission for their feedback. We expect to have their feedback by the second reading, which would be in early December. At that time, we would also bring forward a proposed fee schedule amendment. And if council chose to approve this film ordinance, we would, staff would move forward with putting the information on the website so that potential applicants could understand the clear and transparent process and what would be needed for them to to submit for a film permit. So as a reminder, the recommended action here tonight is to conduct the first reading of ordinance two-five-two-two-seven-nine. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you, and I'll go to questions.
Through the mayor.
Okay. Any question?
Mayor?
Maybe.
Oh, Councilmember Wong.
Um, yeah, so thank you for the presentation. Real quick, there's only five principles I care about here. One, and I'm going to ask you each of these questions. Does this ordinance protect our residents, yes or no?
I believe the film ordinance does.
Does this, does this, does this ordinance promote our city?
I think it provides equal opportunity for people who want to film.
Does this ordinance provide for cost recovery?
It provides cost recovery that is not there now, I would say. Yeah.
Thank you. Does it prevent risks?
There are insurance requirements in the ordinance. And so it provides additional protection for the city, yes.
And does it prioritize economic development?
I think it does because it makes the city a more film-friendly destination.
Thank you, I'm good.
Okay, and are there a question?
I had a quick, quick question for you, Sam. This proposed ordinance that you're sending to to the Film Commission, the Califor, California Film Commission, that doesn't state costs or anything. It's just a sort of conceptual.
It's the exact draft that we included in the agenda. The Film Commission needs to have the draft thirty days prior to the ordinance becoming effective. We can still make changes to the ordinance. I do think that that would push the December meeting to the second meeting in December if we do make changes to the ordinance today. There's some sense of, I wouldn't call it urgency, but the sooner we get the ordinance passed, the sooner we'll be in a position to get all the good things that Councilmember Wong identified in his comments.
Okay. So what's the notification method? Right now, it's two forty-eight hours, but people would get a letter or a sign on the street or what?
We were considering that it would be similar to the notification method in our Community Development Department, where we send a piece of mail to their home. And the city could do that, and we would separately collect for the costs of making that happen. Or we could determine that we should have the applicant send those notifications out themselves. I don't think that's been fully determined, and I don't think it needs to be in the actual ordinance, the methodology.
Oh, okay. For twenty, forty-eight hours, a letter seems to be very short. Okay, so we can talk about that. And I would. And what if someone wants to object? What would be that process?
They can object, they can reach out to the applicant. The applicant's contact information will be on the notice, and they can reach out to the applicant and make their concerns known. I think it would be difficult for one individual community member to put a stop to the filming or to the project. But they could certainly make their concerns known, and hopefully the applicant will take care.
And is it possible that we do up to eight PM in residential area and ten PM for commercial area?
We could definitely satisfy that, yes. We can make that change.
Okay, let's go to public comment.
Yes, Mayor, I have one request to speak from Peggy Griffin in Community Hall. And I have one request to speak virtually from San Ralph.
Okay, that would go more than eleven o'clock?
Correct, so we should extend the meeting?
So let's extend the meeting until eleven fifteen. Come on, eleven fifteen, just in case. We'll try.
I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting to eleven fifteen. Let's go.
Moore, second.
Okay, let's vote.
Councilmember Fruen?
Aye.
Councilmember Mohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
So back to public comment.
So welcome, Peggy. Good evening again, councils, members, and staff. I have a couple issues, concerns. One, overreach. In the permit requirements and exemptions, no person, including students, shall use any public or private property or residence for the purpose of film production without first applying for and receiving a permit. I think that's overreach. I should be able to film on my own property, and I shouldn't need a permit. And if a teacher tells a kid that they have an assignment, which is very, often happens, the students shouldn't have to fill out a permit, even if they're exempt.
That's okay, we will answer later.
Okay.
So just give us all your questions.
Okay, candidates make, okay. The city of Santa Clara does not include as charities or nonprofits, 501(c)(4)'s. And so I don't think you should have 501(c)(4)'s as getting exemptions. Those are political organizations that are nonprofits. That said, you need to consider candidates make short videos. People do TikTok clips. They do it in public, they do it on in parks, they do it. Are you requiring all these people to have permits? Some people make money creating YouTube videos in the privacy of their own home. But the way this reads, you know, I I think it needs some word fixing. What about debates such as candidate debates? Do they have to fill out a form, and do they have to pay fees? I looked at it, and it looks like people who are commercial, they get money for videos and photos, do wedding photos in a park. Will they need to have a permit? I also think noticing to the public three hundred feet is not enough. Forty-eight hours is not enough, especially if you're going to close the street or prevent access or you're having helicopters and drones flying around. And I didn't see any appeal process. Thank you. and drones flying around. And I didn't see any appeal process. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And now we will move to San R., who's requesting to speak virtually. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, Councilmembers. I think you need to draw a fine balance between monetizing the commercial production while maintaining quality of life versus ensuring regulations on private production in residential neighborhoods that may pose its own nuisances versus allowing for the benign activity of a TikTok or an Instagram or a YouTube content creator that may be a high schooler and not for our high school kids in the midst of staff trying to get permits. It's hard enough to deal with building permits and planning permits and all of the other permits that we now don't need our high schoolers trying to chase City Hall for permits even though they don't have to pay fees. So please make sure that you draw that balance in the best manner possible and not have our high schoolers in the midst of these permits. Thank you.
Thank you, San. Mayor, no additional requests to speak.
Okay, so City Attorney, could you answer some of the questions?
Yes, the ordinance only applies to commercial production. It does also apply to 501(c)(3) corporations and students, only to the extent that they need to apply for a permit, but there would be no fees attached for those two entities that would not be commercial. Otherwise, it only applies to commercial filming. So if you are in a public park and you're taking wedding photos or any other kind of photos, if those photos aren't meant to be sold in a commercial fashion, the permit process wouldn't apply, the ordinance wouldn't apply. And if you're taking photos in the privacy of your own home, that the permit process, the ordinance would not apply either. So I really think that the way it's written, it addresses most of the concerns that we heard from the public speakers.
It sounds like we might need an FAQ to address those questions. However, so a high schooler, if they are videotaping for a school project, they will need to apply for a permit? That doesn't seem to make sense.
We could more-
But if a high schooler take a video and plan to sell it, a high schooler can, many of high schoolers are pretty business enterprising here. So that they will need permit. But a high schooler doing it for their home video, school project, they shouldn't even need a permit?
I don't think they do.
But you said that they-
Oh, students. We should carve out young students versus like film school students.
No, I mean, students, even however age, they could still make video and sell it.
Oh, well, then that would be commercial.
Yeah. So only commercial, right? So if young student making a school project, that's not commercial.
Correct.
They don't even need to apply.
Well, actually, the way that the ordinance is written, students and 501(c)(3) corporations do need to get a permit. They just don't have to pay any fees.
Wait, commercial video needs to permit. Non-commercial, no permit. Does it matter who makes it? So if a student making commercial video, they should pay?
Correct.
If the student makes non-commercial, they shouldn't pay?
They don't pay, but they-
So it shouldn't matter who makes a video, whether it's commercial or not?
Well, we have, they don't pay, but we're still looking to get a permit.
So Mayor, part of-
Oh, okay. Applies only to commercial. Non-commercial, no permit. For commercial student, and so that could be film, student who are making a video that they are selling is commercial. Student made the commercial video, or nonprofit made the commercial video, they need a permit but don't need to pay. Okay. Is that clear? And so, one of the comment is we, 501(c)(4) should still pay because 501(c)(4) usually is a very large campaign organization. But then I think the comment was a campaign of like FPPC with a small FPPC committee, they should, that's not commercial. They are just campaigning, right? So they are, so that's not commercial video.
Correct.
Okay.
Would they still need a permit?
Not commercial, no permit. That's right?
Correct. And if you're a 501(c)(3) entity, so charitable and student films are defined, and those filmmakers don't need to pay, and they can sell their films, just like what you were saying.
Okay.
Correct.
So if they are not selling, whoever is making it, it's okay?
Correct.
If they are selling it and-
Whoever's selling it.
Student or 501(c)(3), we want to drop 501(c)(4). Student or 501(c)(3), apply for permit, no fee?
Correct. And electioneering, et cetera, is not for commercial purposes.
Yeah.
Correct.
No permit.
No permit.
Yeah.
So is it, through the mayor, is it possible for us to have the first reading of this ordinance and strike the 501(c)(4) out of the definition? Or do we have to have, is that a small enough change that that could be done tonight?
I believe it is, yes. And also reducing the time from 10:00 PM to 8:00 PM?
So 8:00 PM for commercial or for residential area, right?
For residential only, yes. And then you wanted larger, a larger notice period?
How long we want to notice?
72 hours?
72 hours? But I actually would prefer, we can talk about that later. I like that there should be a physical sign on the location where they are doing it, like the A-frame for the pavement.
Yeah, it requires notice. The ordinance doesn't have to spell out exactly what that ordinance is, so exactly we can organize that later.
Do that later.
But we probably-
Where will we specify that? Notification method?
We could do a resolution.
Be an administrative resolution. Okay, well, figure that out later. Anything else?
But we should address the period. If you want to do 72 hours, we can do that?
Let's do that.
Okay, so here is what I have. First reading of the draft.
Draft ordinance.
Ordinance. Where's this changes? Strike 501(c)(4) exemption, 8:00 PM for, up to 8:00 PM for residential area, 72-hour notice.
So I have a question, Madam Mayor, and for the City Attorney. If you strike the 501(c)(4) exemption, what then happens to a 501(c)(4) organization if it wants to make a film?
Since it's not for commercial purposes, then this ordinance doesn't apply.
Okay, so it would be treated the same way as any other political entity?
Correct.
Okay.
So if they make a video that's not for commercial, no permit. But if 501(c)(3) makes a video that they are planning to sell to fundraise or whatever, then that, they need permit?
A permit but no fee.
Yeah. No, we are striking that exemption, so they need permit, they need to pay fee. Strike 501(c)(4) fee exemption.
Then you're taxing political speech.
No, it's, this doesn't, this is not a tax. This is just-
No, that would tax, that would, if you're imposing a fee on the 501(c)(4) just to speak, I think you're starting to tax political speech, especially if you're going to treat other political campaigns differently.
This is for fee exemption.
Other political campaign doesn't sell the video. This is talking about if they sell it.
But you're striking that exemption.
No. Other campaigns make a video just-
Then you're saying it's commercial.
If they, a lot of 501(c)(4) is social enterprise, they actually sell product to raise funding, to fund their staff.
Correct.
Right? So-
That's still, that's still nonprofit.
The city shouldn't waive their fee because that means we are, the city's supporting that campaign.
No, you're not supporting, you're not supporting anything. You're not taxing political speech at that point.
No, we are recovering the fee.
I don't see any, I don't see any difference between a-
City is recovering the fees for permit.
Yeah, no, all I see here is viewpoint discrimination. I can't, I can't support that change.
If a 501(c)(4) organization wants street closure, and we are charging them fee for street closure, that fee is just for street closure. It's not charging them for their speech, right? We're just requiring the fee for-
The street closure fees, those are a separate category of fees. So if you're filming and this ordinance is adopted, then you would have to pay your fees associated with the permit. And if you're going to be, you know, taking over the public right-of-way, you would have to get an encroachment permit and pay separately for that.
Yeah. So City Attorney, do you think charging permit fees, filming production fee for 501(c)(4) organization, when they make a commercial video, is that taxing political speech?
I would have to research that question, but I do see a 501(c)(4) and a 501(c)(3) kind of in the same category. And the way we were, you know, defining that is if they are selling the product, then they would pay the permit fees.
I will-
Charitable.
I will further point out that just about any FPPC organization that is not specific to a candidate, in other words, not a candidate-controlled committee, would also qualify as a 501(c)(4). So the only difference there is that you're saying if they've gone off and filed the paperwork to be a c4, they don't get the fee exemption, but some other FPPC entity could because it's not a 501(c)(4) and at least hasn't registered anything with the IRS. I don't think that's a meaningful distinction.
If they don't sell the video, it's the same. If the 501(c)(4) organization does not sell the video, then it's the same as the campaign committee. But if they are selling it as a commercial product.
Quick time check, Mayor, we have two minutes.
Yeah. Okay, so that's the vote then.
Okay, so it's still, those, your motion remains?
So this is my motion? Oh, was there, is there any second? I forgot.
I'll second to move this along.
I'll make a substitute motion that consists of the motion on the table, removing the striking of the 501(c)(4) for fee exemption.
I'll support that to move it along. Do we have a vote on the friendly amendment?
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I have a concern about the 501(c)(4) issue, and this is something that we can revisit, but I think for now, I would like to see it remain in the definitions. And then if we can have some more information from the City Attorney about that item so that we can consider it at another time when we do code cleanup, for instance, we can, we can-
So you are keeping the fee exemption now?
We just strike that line out. Get rid of that.
So if we-
That was precisely my motion, and it was seconded.
Yeah, that's Councilmember Fruen's motion. Let's vote on it.
Then we can come back later on that.
So City Attorney, if we adopt something that exempts 501(c)(4) and then we go back and amend it to remove that exemption, would we get in any trouble because we are making it more restrictive for them?
All right, I don't think we would get in any trouble. I think that would be a fine way to do it.
Okay. Okay, then let's vote. So what is the substitute motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
The substitute motion, Councilmember Fruen?
Aye.
Councilmember Mohan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Okay, the meeting adjourned.